I'd like to call to order the March 19, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. We have with us tonight Reverend Adam Schurz, Executive Pastor from Broadway United Methodist Church. We invite you to the microphone and provide the invocation.
Would you pray with me? God, my prayer tonight is for the good of our city. I pray for our residents and our visitors, for those who are from here, and for the many who, like me, come from various places around our state and nation, even our world, who now call this place home. I pray for those with considerable means and those who live day-to-day, for all in between, for those who create meaningful work, for those who run businesses, for those who work the jobs, and for those who continue to look for work. God, I pray for the good of our city, in keeping with your desire for all your children to be safe and healthy, to live with purpose and dignity, that our city would be a place where all people might find a voice and a purpose and a life of meaning. God, I pray for our leaders, those who live to serve, whose power is in their ability to serve, for our schools and our government, that your Spirit would guide us through them. I ask for your wisdom and discernment. I ask that you would give them the courage and strength to always do the right thing at the right time for the right reason. Would you guide them? And would you guide us to follow, so that we would stand united for the common good of all? And I ask my prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you'd join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag. Commissioner Waltrip will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shaller, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dunning.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I do, Mayor.
Anyone up here? Do you have any comments, Mr. DeFebo?
Yes, myself? Okay. There's two items. One is that we'll need to have an executive session, and Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to CARES 61811G, discussions between the city and a representative of business entity in discussions concerning a specific proposal if open discussions would jeopardize the site in retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Second item, Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to use my city manager time to ask Vicki Fitch from the Tourism Bureau to come up and address us concerning Municipal Order Number Five, Special Project Concerning Corvette Museum.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo.
You're welcome.
Very excited to be here tonight. It has been quite a while before I've come for you, before you all, to make a request to draw money from our Special Tourism Projects Fund. And we have the motorsports park at the National Corvette Museum. And I don't know how much of the material you all have been able to delve through, but we have quite a project that they are planning. In the, in the initial phases, well, they're in the process of raising money. They have put money into the project, and they are continuing to raise money, and they hope to raise a million dollars, an additional million dollars by June of this year. They are on target, and they have come to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to request $400,000 to be drawn from our Special Tourism Projects Fund. The, it's on a, the 184 acres that they have currently is where they would have an auto skid pad, but also a two-mile track. They call that the west track. And our board specified that the funds would be used towards that west track, because that would be what would make such an economic impact on Bowling Green in bringing people in, bringing visitors in, be for high-performance driving instruction, along with other types of driving instruction. About a third of the time of the year, they feel like that that will be used by the Corvette Museum, and about two-thirds of the period, they feel like the track will be in use each year, will be rented by automotive groups, car clubs, for similar events.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Fitch? Will it be available to the police department at no cost for training?
Well, we can ask about the no-cost part, but I believe that they would be happy to have the police department out there.
And the tourism funds come from a tax on hotel and motel stays.
Yes.
Not out of our general fund.
Exactly.
And that is going to promote items that will cause more stays in the hotel.
Yes, they are expecting about over 31,000 hotel room nights a year to be generated by this. So we're just very pleased. Our, our hotel community is very pleased, and we just see a lot of new visitors coming our way. We have Kristy Thomas here with us tonight from the National Corvette Museum, if you all have any specific questions that are...
Other than the one I asked? Any questions?
She may be able to answer that.
Can you commit one or two of that for us? Yes, ma'am.
We explain, I can understand the racetracks, a skid path.
I'm gonna leave that to Kristy.
Okay.
The skid pad is teaching you to come out of a skid, basically. You know, you lose traction on the ice or on a wet road, you hydroplane. It's practicing. And other schools across the country do that in different ways, sometimes by flooding out the pavement, and you've got plenty of space. So you practice it and learn how to control that, and it's a good experience. Some schools have a special car that will put you into a skid. So it's just learning how to handle the car and drive safer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I don't know about Bruce and Billy. When I went through the State Police Academy in 1970, we had to go down to an airport they let us use for that, for two days, two and a half days, actually. And the skid path we had was dug, oil, oil that had been taken out of the cars over a period of time in oil changing, and put it all there on one of the landing strips with cones and things up, and you had to try to go through them and so on, and...
I've heard of that before. I don't think they use the oil as much anymore.
Is that right? Oh, they messing out on the stuff. Because that way, when you get out of the car, you'd slip and fall and everything, and...
I'm sorry, Joe.
Sorry, Bruce. Go ahead and laugh.
Hey, I didn't say anything about horses and buggies or anything, so...
Yeah, I know. We were just transitioning over to cars and...
And we do have plans for law enforcement training. That's something that we've discussed, and I understand that there's a need for that in this area and closer reaches.
Seriously, will our police department be able to use it at no cost?
I don't, I don't know about that. We've not discussed that. We plan to have it rented out, so if it's rented, then...
Y'all need to discuss that, because that would give our guys an opportunity to train in pursuit driving, as well as the training they get over at Eastern Kentucky at Richmond.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Kristy. We appreciate it. Did you have something else?
Mayor, one more item. I'd like to withdraw Municipal Order Number Six. There's been a change of nexus location. They're gonna be holding most of the events at the Allen and Depot. Sharon Taber is here, if you have any questions, but there'll be no need to, for the City Commission to act. I'm sure Sharon is appreciative of the Commission's willingness to consider this, but other plans have been made to holding the event. There will be use of the cemetery for a 21-gun salute during the event. Sharon's here, if you'd like an overview of anything.
If you got just a moment, Sharon.
Good evening. It's long been a while. The Union Commemoration is for the invasion that occurred, actually, in February of 1862, about a year and a half late, 151 years and a half late, when the Union Army actually came in and the Confederates left. We're commemorating this event because it was important to Bowling Green's history, to our nation's history. And this is a Union event only. We plan on having children's games, and we plan on having a mock bombardment on the South Lot of the cemetery with cannons, so you hear a lot of big booms on Saturday morning. That's what you hear. It lasts about 30 minutes. We'll have some craftsmen, period craftsmen at the depot. And in the evening, we're, children's kits, the people that are involved are the Howchins Center, River View, Fountain Square Players, the Downtown Merchants, the Rail Park, the African American Museum, and about 50 other private citizens are all involved in putting this on. In the evening, there'll be a military ball at the depot with period music, and anybody who wants to dress up and become a costume, we'd be happy to see you. And then we're gonna do a repeat, our lantern tour at Pinehurst Cemetery. And we have 10 actors who'll be portraying various male and female characters that actually lived in Bowling Green between 1796 and 1866, and they will give their perspective of their life and the impact of the war on their life. And it's gonna be free this time, too. So it'll be on Saturday night. On Saturday, Sunday morning, the Presbyterian Church will be doing a period service at the church at 11 o'clock. And at 1:30 at Fairview Cemetery and Mount Maria Cemetery, we'll be having a memorial service for the colored infantry and the Union soldiers buried in Fairview Cemetery. And this will all be free to the public.
Thank you for the information. Any questions?
Thanks, Sharon. I feel a whole lot better. I was a little concerned.
Joe was afraid the South was gonna rise again.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great historical...
I wasn't gonna be a part of that.
That's right, you're with the Allen and Friends Allen, and so they're gonna be doing it. 150th anniversary of the Civil War. All right, anything else?
No, Mayor, thank you.
I have approval of minutes from the March 5, 2013 meeting.
Some of them.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Williams. Any discussion?
Joe, yes.
Please call the roll. He's next.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Now we have a public comment section, if there's someone in the audience that would like to make a comment on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, we invite you to the microphone. We've set aside three minutes per speaker, if you would give your name and address, so we can have that for the record, please.
My name is George Peterson. I reside at 2138 Small House Road and have been there for more than half my life. And I spend a fair amount of time with folks in our community who are less affluent and less influential than we are generally. As a consequence of that, I've become involved in landlord-tenant issues, not as a direct result, but as just benevolent activity that I do with my church. In the course of time, I've become aware of Earlta. You all know what Earlta is. I've written you some letters, you know that already. I'm not here to say to you, we ought to pass Earlta. That's not what I'm here to say. What I'm here to say is that 50% of our population are tenants in Bowling Green, Kentucky. Less than 5% of our population are landlords. Now, I'm not suggesting that landlords are by nature evil guys. I know better than that. I know many of them, you know many of them. But I am suggesting that when 35,000 people rely on 4,000 people to establish the rules under which they live, then there ought to be sufficient regulation in there to make sure those 4,000 people don't inordinately use the power they have to create their leases without any oversight. And I was pleased to see the work that Mr. Overton did in analyzing Earlta versus Kentucky Common Law, because it's clear when you read that, if you take ideology aside, it's clear when you read that, there's an absence of regulation that the tenant can rely upon to balance the field. Now, I understand that in the state of Kentucky, it's either Earlta or Kentucky Common Law. It's the way the law is written. I understand that completely. But it doesn't mean it's a bad law. As a matter of fact, it came into presence because of the work of an organization called the Uniform Law Commission. I gave you some documentation about that. That Commission's been in place 120 years, 1892. It was formed for the purpose of unifying disparate laws among our states. It's represented by all 50 states, District of Columbia, Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico. They are all represented. Over 300 lawyers sit in that Commission for the purpose of making sanity out of what would otherwise be insanity. I'm not suggesting it's perfect, but as I look at what we have today, and I look at the effect it has on those 35,000 tenants, many of whom are immigrants, many of whom are refugees, almost all of whom are minimum-wage people, and knowing that the landlord is the sole perpetrator of the lease, he writes it, and he can pretty much write anything into the lease he wants to write into it. And there's very little check and balance in Kentucky Common Law for that. So my plea for you is not to say yea or nay to Earlta, but to say, let's at least have a forum in which those who are, those interested citizens in this community on either side of that issue can sit with you, and you ought to chair that forum, and let's talk it through, because it's not a trivial thing. It affects 35,000 people in our community every day, and I've been involved in some of those effects. And although there are some very decent landlords in this town, there are some that aren't, and they know they aren't, and they know that they don't, that there's nothing that overlooks their shoulder to make them behave better. And we have, we have tenants who cannot, as a matter of fact, not only don't understand their leases, they can't read their leases. And so I just plead for equity, and I think one of the ways to get to equity is for us to have an open forum, to in fact have the five of you sit as chairs of that forum, invite interested citizens in this community to talk about it, and let's probe the depths, find out what needs to be done in this community, and then we'll know whether Earlta is that satisfactory response or not. Because right now, I'm of the impression that we haven't spent much time actually looking at the issues that affect these people.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
And I want us to.
Mr. Dunning, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, it's one of the concerns that I've had every time this subject has come up over the years has been, and I certainly don't know every word of the law, but it appears that the law puts everyone in the same category. The good guys that you're talking about where a tenant can call and something's done that night for them or the next morning. Well, you've got the other person over here that we all know about, because our code enforcement people are with them and talking to them every day about problems. I feel that, and we've discussed it this way many times, that one of our major roles here is to make sure that the citizens are getting their best from our code enforcement Code enforcement, and we've emphasized code enforcement here in city government the last several years, I think is the key to making sure that those tenants live in a house or an apartment where the individual owners are going to take care of those places. City manager, once we get calls in here pertaining to a problem, we take care of, in most cases, that day or the next day. Now, I realize that sometime our employees are put in a difficult position because of the legalities sometimes they come in contact with. And I've just had some concern over the years. Majority of the people here in Bowling Green that own apartments are, that are in that business on a day-to-day basis, they, they take care of their apartments, and they take care of their tenants. And as I mentioned, we, we know who they are. But getting our people to work with and take control of those individual landlords, that are problem landlords, I think is a direction that we've tried to in the past and should continue to try to do, rather than putting everybody in the same category of saying, whether we're saying it or not, it is interpreted by those that are in the business, that we are talking about them, because of the way the law is written, the way I understand. And I'm certainly not gonna sit here and say that there are not some problems in our community, but I think one of the major ways to go about eliminating those problems is for the people to let our code enforcement staff know, one, where they live, here's what's taking place, or here's something that hasn't taken place, and we have a problem. I think we can correct it, and we will try to correct it if we can.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate that. All right, does anyone else that has a comment?
If I, if I may respond briefly to that.
Sure.
It is my understanding that code enforcement deals with health, safety, and habitability of property. I don't think they deal with any of the legal relationships that exist between landlords and tenants.
No, and I said...
I may be wrong about that, but I don't think they do.
And I said that. At times...
And all I'm saying is that any time that's the issue, you fall back on Kentucky Common Law. That's where you, that's, that's the only outlet you have. And I read, I've read Earlta thoroughly, not thoroughly, but I've read it often. I've read Mr. Overton's analysis of it, and it is clear that there are many, many, many issues that come up between landlords and tenants that are not code enforcement issues.
Yeah.
They don't have to do with running water, or hot water, or leaking faucet. They don't have to do with that.
And I agree with you. I guess my question is, what are we to do? I don't think it's our responsibility to be attorneys and legal advisors. We're not in the business of being landlords.
And that's not what Earlta asks you to do. It asks, it asks you to...
Well, I'm asking you, what do we do in this case? When our people, when our staff runs into a problem, we'll call, and they come back and tell the city manager, Mr. City Manager, this, we feel, based on what we've done, our evaluation, this is a legal problem. What are you asking? And I'm not, I'm not being smart-headed, Joe.
No, I understand.
I'm asking, I'm trying to learn, too, because I've been here a few years, and this has come up quite a few years. What are we to do?
Well, at this point in time, as I understand it, the only outlet you have is the Kentucky Common Law. And if the lease gives the landlord untoward authority, and he can write that into his lease, because it becomes a contract, then you can't do anything. It's just the way it is. Okay? If he wants, if he wants to write into his lease that my personal property can be held to account for his lease, then guess what? He has a right to my personal property. He come in, and I have, and I have seen leases where the person's TV and bed and couch are used as surety against that lease, and that ain't right. And yet, we can't do a thing about that in our city if one's written that way, if I understand the law correctly.
Mayor, I know I'm running my mouth as I usually do. Can I continue?
If you choose to.
Sure.
If you'd like to.
Okay.
I knew that. Gee, my apologies. I got Overton, because I know a guy named that. My apologies.
In that particular example, I don't think that is the case 100% of the time. Let me give you an example. And I live in an apartment that is managed by a well-known management company, and if they come and come to my apartment, they always let me know. But I also realize that if I'm not there and they can't get in contact with me, and there's something that needs to be taken care of, they can come in, and I want them to come in.
No argument with that?
Yeah. But the other category we're talking about over here, where this may be happening illegally and so on and so on, what is the city of Bowling Green responsible for?
To establish regulations that manage those issues. That's what, that's what law and regulation is all about. It's not about asking you to become the attorney, it's asking law to stand in its place so that equity takes place, so that both parties have an equal standing and footing under the law. And I submit to you that today, that's not true. I have a situation not five days ago in which a landlord decided on his own that he would come into the property uninvited, and he did. Now, that happens to be under Earlta against the law. He's violated the right of occupancy of that property. It ain't against his lease, because his lease said he could do it, and the person signed it, not realizing what he was signing away, which is his right to privacy. And that happens. And all I'm saying is that in the interest of equity, given that over half our population are tenants, we ought at least take a fresh look at what it means to regulate and have laws that balance the equation. And that ain't ideological, that's fairness. And we, and saying, I won't argue that having Earlta as the only course is frustrating. I will not debate that. But welcome to the world in which we live, okay? The organization that created that law did it studiously, they did it with process, and it has been now enacted in about, oh, 20 or 25 of our states. I understand it's disruptive, I understand it changes, it shifts the balance of quote-unquote "power," but it brings equity, in my view. And all I'm asking for is that we have an open forum about it, that we actually put it out there, and let's all talk about it, and let those on both sides debate the issue, and let, let those of you who will finally make the decision be a party to that. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
And just as a point of, point of information, the city did that in 2006, I believe it was, Joe, is that correct?
I think so.
Yeah. And, you know, it's always gonna be, I guess, a group that wants to do it every two years or something like that, but I think it's been addressed. Ms. Dana, do you have something to say, too?
Yes, I just wanted to just answer your questions very quickly with my three minutes. Yeah, my name is Dana Beasley Brown, and I live on Indian Ole Street here in Bowling Green. And your first question about...
I remember you. You sat right over there when I was mayor, right over there on the backside.
I probably did. You're right. I probably don't remember as well as you, because I've got little kids. But your first question about the fact that landlords who are taking advantage of people, and then are great landlords who are really providing homes for people and taking care of people, are put in the same group. Earlta is not punitive. It does not punish landlords just because they're landlords. It is preventative. It is like the seatbelt law. All of us here, as citizens, as long as we wear our seatbelt, that law does not affect us at all. However, if we don't wear our seatbelt and we get pulled over, then there is a punitive punishment for that. That's exactly the way Earlta works. If you're a great landlord, you're taking care of folks, you are providing homes for people and treating people the right way, you won't even know Earlta exists. However, if you are treating folks in a way that's hurting them, or, you know, taking away some of their few rights that they do have, then there are repercussions of that. So I just want to make it clear that Earlta doesn't punish everyone. It's like the seatbelt law, that only if you do something that harms another person is there a repercussion. And then your other question about code enforcement is a great question, because, of course, that's the first option all of us take who work in this field of housing. You know, obviously, the first option is, well, let's, you know, let's go to code enforcement. These is a code enforcement problem, it's health and safety, you know, this is what we should do. And what we found out is there are no protections against someone being... And what we found out is there are no protections against someone being evicted just because they reported to code enforcement. There are no protections in Bowling Green for a citizen who reports on their property that they're renting. And so unfortunately, we have tenants who, even though they're supposed to have this option of reporting to code enforcement, they're not protected against retaliation from their landlord and being evicted because they reported. And so that's why code enforcement is not an actual option for a lot of tenants, because the fear of getting evicted. And we do have stories of people being evicted because they reported. And so I just wanted to clear up those.
Let me ask probably a dumb question. What would happen if there was a standardized lease contract all across the state of Kentucky that had the wording and was filed the way that would protect the tenant as well as the landlord? I realize that I, as an owner of a property, I can go here and draw my own lease contract up, but if there was a contract that was right down the middle, that protected the tenant and protects me as an owner, where are those discussions? What, is that something that may be or could be a step in trying to get to where all of us are? In other words, I don't think it's any of the five, either one of the five up here, is that we are against tenants or any individual in this community not being treated the way they should be treated. That's not the issue. We're going to do whatever we can to make sure people are treated right. But over the years, I, being limited up here, I've been focused on the fact that everybody's not being treated equally, the tenant and the owner over here.
Well, I think Earlta actually would be less restrictive legally than just having one standard lease that everyone has to abide by. What Earlta does, it has basically 10 rights and responsibilities of the tenant and 10 rights and responsibilities of the landlord. So actually, Earlta covers both, bringing greater protections legally for landlords. And it basically says, if a tenant does not take care of the property, that's legal reasons to evict them. If they don't pay their rent, that's legal reasons to evict them. And so calling tenants also, you have these responsibilities to this property, and so those are appropriate reasons for your landlord to evict you. And so it actually, Earlta is doing what you're asked, thinking, you know, that a standard thing to do, but gives you more freedom to create your own lease about other things that may be more particular to your property. But I think this is a great, just example of, I think a public forum would be wonderful, and it would be really great to continue to have these respectful conversations with you all, and to answer questions and to hear stories from both sides. So, thank you.
Well, when you have public forums on a particular subject matter, I think you need to be very careful in the type of forum that you're having, because I can assure you, the subject may be curtains over on the wall, that's the subject, but into the meeting, the subject is going to leave that and be into something else. I don't know that I have the answer. I, as I said, I think all five of us up here are interested in making sure that the owner, landlord, as well as the tenant, is taken care of. And I realize some of those individuals as tenants are not able to have the legal services that could take care of their problem under Kentucky law. And I'm through, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing done, we'll go to the first item on the agenda ordinance, second reading of ordinance 2013, number four.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning two tracts of land containing 0.3466 acre from RM4 multifamily residential to OPC office professional commercial located at 623 Fifth Avenue East and 500 Chestnut Street, presently owned by Miller and York LLC with FMC Properties LLC as contract vendor.
Motion.
Motion by Danning, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Danning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2013, number 41.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Bill Finley, John P. Williams, and Laura Suthard to the Urban Growth Design Review Board.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. This is a reappointment of the three, three of the city's appointees, and the attendance sheet is there. Is there any discussion? Please call and roll.
Danning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2013, 42.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2013-27 for the purchase of a street sweeper from Tri-State International Trucks Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $163,971.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFebbe.
Due to the current condition of our street sweeper, it became necessary to go out to bid. We were able to use some money saved by the lack of snow this year, which was nice. We went out to bid, we had four bidders, one was incomplete, so we had three in the pool. Tonight, we're here to ask you to accept the bid of Tri-State International Trucks of Bowling Green in the amount of $163,971.
Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may. I think all of us over the telephone or other ways have discussed this particular bid. A few years ago, we asked the city manager and our city attorney to implement some type of order that would give local bidders an opportunity and a little leadway on bidding on products, police vehicles, fire equipment, et cetera, where they would have a step maybe ahead of out-of-town bidders on a particular bid. This particular bid, as we all know, is a little higher than the individual out-of-town bid. Now, as Commissioner Hill has said, and others in the past, I know Commissioner Waltrip and Williams both, and Mayor, all of us want everyone that has the product that we are looking for to bid on that product based on our paperwork and what we are requesting. A few years ago, we had a situation where we were buying police cars, and an out-of-town, excuse me, bidder, out-of-town dealership outbid a local bidder for the same product, I think maybe by $500.
$6 a car, $24 a tire for a full car.
Yeah. And we were in a position to where we had to give that to that out-of-town bidder. As I said, all of us want to do things locally, but in doing so, our local bidders need to make sure that they're not taking advantages of us, and their pencil is just as sharp as the out-of-town bidders. I would suggest that we take a look, and then it's, instead of coming up with a percentage over, that we look at maybe coming up with an amount over, rather than percentage. In other words, get everybody in the same ballpark, hitting at the same ball. But I think we have to tonight, as we've already voted, well, we've got motion and a second, we haven't voted, go with the bid submitted by the local bidder. But I would ask, Mayor, the city manager and his staff to bring something to us in the future pertaining to this process.
We list this right now?
Yeah, this has a sunset provision on it.
October 18.
October 18, so before the-
There's also a cap right now, it's 5%, not to exceed 5,000. We do have a cap. This just fell within the cap.
Yeah, a high cap.
Well, that was, we had a commissioner who requested that ordinance, that changed, it was passed.
You know, and based on that particular bid, that night, he was right. I mean, you know, we gave the bid to a Lexington dealer, automobile dealer, for police cars, and we had the same cars sitting out there on the Scottsboro Road. But anyhow, those are my thoughts.
We'll be revisiting that before October, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Please call and roll.
Danning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2013, number 43.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative business with Motorola Solutions of Schaumburg, Illinois, under the Kentucky pricing contract for the purchase of 24 mobile radios in the total amount of $78,950.40.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFebbe.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We received money from the Homeland Security Grant to enable the purchase of these 24 radios. This was done through a state contract, which is available to us and allows us to access the equipment that we've been using, which is Motorola for our digital radios. After this purchase, we will only have 47 analog radios left in our ensemble. Doug is here, if you have any questions.
Comment or questions? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Please call and roll.
Danning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2013, number 44.
Municipal order approving recommendation from the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau to distribute $400,000 of transient room taxes to the National Corvette Museum.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Danning and second by Hill. I believe we've heard a presentation on it.
Just ditto, earlier we heard Vicki speak, and I think she did a nice job of answering our questions, and we recommend that you go forward.
Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Danning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. We've pulled item number six, so we'll be going to municipal order 2013, number 46.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement related to provision of emergency police services with the Warren County Regional Jail.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFebbe.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Our police chief was approached by Mr. Strode at the Warren County Jail to look at a reciprocal between us and Warren County Jail to provide police services during a time of emergency. We have learned that Jackie needed this to satisfy regulatory people in Frankfurt. We also think it's a good idea, and we would do this generally naturally, to help our neighbor during a time of crisis. Doug is here, if you wish to pursue any nuance of the agreement.
Questions or discussion? Please call and roll.
Danning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, that's the last item on the agenda, but we do have a closed session, just a reminder, our next meeting will be-
No vote required.
No vote required, our next meeting will be on April 2, 2013. Thank you, Danning.